Do we have everyone, Kyle, so far that's coming from the Muni?
Yes, you have the ear forum, so you can start whenever you like.
Okay, great. Well, good afternoon, everyone. It's May 23rd, 2022. This is our GBOS and MOA quarterly meeting, rescheduled at 4:00 PM. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors, its committees and subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Open Meetings Act as found in Alaska Statute 44.62.310 and Anchorage Municipal Code 1.25 Public Meetings. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors operates under the Girdwood Public Meeting Standards of Conduct. Call to order at 4:03 PM. I am GBOS co-chair Brianna Sullivan and Parks and Recreation Cemetery Supervisor. We'll start with, after me, Mike.
Hi, Mike Edgington, GBOS co-chair and land use supervisor.
Thank you, Mike. Jennifer?
Jennifer Wingard, now Roads and Utilities Supervisor.
Thank you, Jennifer. Amanda?
Amanda Sassy, Public Safety Supervisor.
Thank you. Guy? Do we have Guy today?
No, I don't think Guy's here yet.
Okay, please let me know if you see him coming in. Are there any disclosures today?
I have a disclosure. This is Amanda.
Go ahead, Amanda.
On the agenda, we are talking about potentially the Imagine Girdwood funding, and I would like to disclose that I am the vice chair of Imagine Girdwood.
Okay, thank you, Amanda, for listening that for the discussion that we'll have with MOA today. Are there any other disclosures?
I have the same disclosure, except I'm Secretary of Imagine Girdwood, so item six.
Okay, thank you. So item six has two of us who are also on another board that's being discussed on the agenda for updates, so I don't find that to be a significant issue as we are not voting on anything, making any decisions. So we have four of us, and we definitely have a quorum, so I'll continue on with the agenda. Agenda revisions and approval, May 23rd, 2022, MOA GBOS quarterly meeting agenda. Has anyone moved to approve the agenda?
Moved to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Mike. A second?
I'll second that, Amanda.
Thanks, Amanda. All right, announcements. Public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comment. Please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. To help discussions stay productive, please direct your comments to the board rather than other members of the public and keep your comments focused on the business under discussion. Please be respectful of everyone's opinions. Number one on the agenda today is introduction. Welcome. So again, thank you for coming this beautiful afternoon and listening to our concerns and update in Girdwood. And thanks for rescheduling as the previous meeting. We couldn't all have a quorum. I need to see the participants. If we need to introduce, I see Ms. Damboski is here. Would you like to state your name for the record?
Thank you, Brianna. Amy Daboski, Municipal Manager.
Thank you. I see Suzanne.
Hi, Suzanne LaFrance, Anchorage Assembly, District 6.
Thank you, Suzanne LaFrance. Shelley Rowton?
Shelley Rowton with the Assembly and Assembly Council's office.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Okay, well, thank you for this intro. Continuing on to sub number one is our October 2021 Storm Damages Update. Should I read through the whole list there, Kyle? They're all separate, correct?
No, I can go through and just give a quick summary. And we have submitted all our existing claims right now to the State of Alaska, and they are processing it. They have really been overloaded with emergency declarations this year, and they are limited staff, so they're getting through it, but they're hoping to get us a payment here within the next month. We are currently, right now, working on the remaining repairs to all the storm damage that we couldn't do because of snow last year. We're ready to speak, working on Crystal Mountain and taking care of that location. So we hopefully will have that all wrapped up here in the next two to three weeks, and then we will get our final bills to them and make that work in that aspect. So, and we did, at the direction of GBOS, submit a application to the Assembly for our funding for a long-term fix for the Ruine. As to what we got in there, it is temporary at best, as the materials we had at the time when you're approaching. But a long-term fix would be the fish culvert that we discussed in previous meetings. So that request has been put in, and we did hear back from Randy that he had received it, and they would be reviewing it along with the other requests that they've received.
Great, thank you, Kyle. Are there any other comments from the board? Mike, please.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. First one is the reimbursement request to the state. Is that for all of the work that was done in October, well, November, and the work that's being done, and eventually the work that's being done for Crystal Mountain and the other remediation, or were there certain things which weren't eligible, or we don't expect to get paid?
It was for all the work that we have completed up to date at the end of last fall. And so, yes, it was for that period. And then it's receipt-based, and so we're hoping that they reimburse all of it, but they may have some qualifications that we're not aware of as they dive into it. So, so at this point, we've only put in smittles for what we have paid out to our contractors and vendors.
Can you remind me what the total was?
Boy, off the top of my head, I would say at this point it's about $450,000 that we put a request in for.
Okay, thank you. My other question probably is for Suzanne or maybe for Shelley. The, I'm a little confused as to the ARPA funding situation because I've, I understand at one point about 10 million of maybe potentially was allocated to sort of municipal projects, and then the rest to sort of nonprofits and other entities within the municipality. But I'm not quite sure that's the case, and I just wondered if you could clarify where the Assembly currently is on this.
Sure, this is Suzanne, and then Shelley, who's been involved with the process, definitely fill in any gaps if I leave anything out. But nothing has been appropriated yet, Mike. There was some discussion too about a fee waiver. Some of us had put forward an ordinance, and we postponed that one. The administration, as you know, put forward a list of projects, and those will be considered in that total conversation alongside applications that have been received. And one of the priorities of the Assembly is to look at potential funding sources, if there are other potential funding sources like the infrastructure monies, for example, when determining whether or not to fund something. And there will be a work session starting at 8:15 on Thursday going to around 2:00 PM to take a look at those initial applications that have come through and to do some, and I think actually Shelley is going to be reviewing initially for eligibility, and then we'll look at everything that's been received in terms of the priorities, the four priority areas that have been established.
Okay, so we should think of it as one bucket with lots of different applications for that money, not as part of it being ring-fenced for particular municipal projects.
I think that's fair.
Correct, thanks.
Thanks. Thank you, Suzanne. Shelley, do you have anything to fill in?
I don't think so. We really didn't separate anything out by eligibility because we're waiting on the revenue replacement number from OMB. Once we have that number, we'll know what portion of our ARPA funds are available to be spent as general revenue. Basically, there's a number that says this is the difference in what we would have made and what we did make. The calculation that Treasury gives us a guideline on how to determine, and we don't know that yet. But it says you can essentially spend it as if it was general government revenue. So that can be spent outside of those guidelines of Treasury, and there are four categories or seven subcategories. Right now, we have about $288 million in requests and $51,600,000 and change to distribute. So we have a lot of work to do.
Yes, well, thank you for that, Shelley. Any other questions from the board? C and E, we'll go ahead and go to next thing if you don't have anything else. Kyle, for number one?
No, no, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I did have one other follow-up. Because it just came up about other potential sources of money, I assume we haven't found any other potential sources for the culvert replacement. I know we were not eligible for the FEMA remediation. Is it the remediation funds or something similar to that? Because we didn't get, we didn't get, we didn't have the emergency declaration done in time to meet the federal reimbursement or the federal application deadline.
Correct. We didn't qualify for FEMA disaster declaration because of being part of the municipality, our population and our costs diluted. Being part of the whole municipality's population, our costs diluted the qualification. So if it had just been Girdwood alone, based on our population, then we probably wouldn't qualify at that area level. So remediation, no. Mitigation, we're still trying to follow that route, but it's very lengthy. And having the decoration would have helped us at a federal level, but we are pursuing that. We're chasing everything. We just went through a whole process with Lisa Markowski's office, which we thought might be favorable. And now that we've gotten into it and submitted, and they've asked questions, it looks like it's no longer favorable. So we're chasing any opportunity that comes along.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you, Mike, for that question, and thank you, Kyle, for all of the extra work as well. Ms. Damboski, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just gonna let everyone know for the record that Ruane Road was included in the mayor's priority list of uses for the ARPA money. So he did include that $2 million for Ruane Road fish passage culvert replacement. So that was one of the ones that did make the list in the mayor's, from the administration.
Thank you. Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, and I should also point out, it was also on the list for the recommendations to the state for capital funding as well. So thank you for that, although I don't believe it got funded by the state, but thanks for the recommendation.
Thank you for noting that, Mike. I appreciate that. Any other hands? Okay, I see that Chief Weston is here, and also we'll go to number two on the agenda. The Girdwood Fire Department topics, both the status of EMS contract, $15,000 area-wide budget shortfall in first-quarter revisions, and Girdwood EMS funding as a line item in future AFD budgets, as well as the area-wide first-quarter budget revision requests for extrication equipment. So Kyle or Chief Weston?
I'll let you, Chief Weston.
Thank you.
Hi there. Okay, so I'll start with good news. We love good news, right? So the $15,000 put back into the EMS budget was approved, so that's no longer an issue. So that was super good news. As everybody knows, there's a lot of tourists in town, and we are seeing a lot of business and traffic on the highway and in Girdwood. So we are, just like everyone else, all the other departments, having staffing issues and shortfalls, but we're trying to meet objectives. Status of EMS contract, I'm talking to Chief Shroggy, we've, we'll sort of agreed to disagree. And so we are not, at this moment, signing, the board of directors that I serve have elected not to sign a new contract since it would only be for a year contract unless it was not for a year contract, which would mean it wouldn't, if it had a number in it, it would be for a one-year contract only, and then we would have to reapply every year. That's my understanding versus not having a number where we'd get that. And then I understand that according to, that the municipality does not want to do a cost of living increase in any municipal contracts, even though I do know it's in the Whittier Police contract. So I don't know why we are not eligible, but Whittier is. But that's aside. Along with that, first-quarter budget revision request for extrication equipment. We did put in a first-quarter budget request for the extra, the $175,000 of extrication equipment. And then OMB also wanted a line item for, and quotes for every item, which was fine. But Chief Shroggy had already told me to fundraise for that. It's like I have to fundraise for all the other things that we do in the EMS area that is outside the fire service area. So I took that to heart, and I have fundraised that amount of money. Now, I want to tell you that most fire chiefs are not out there having to fundraise for $400,000 or $500,000 worth of things in their service area, but I have been able to fundraise for that money. So that was now a little longer issue, and I had told the OMB director that we didn't need that item as a first-quarter budget revision. Any questions?
Thank you, Chief Weston. Are there any questions from the board?
We are gonna need to talk at some point, and maybe this is an internal thing, about how this tax cap that we have affects the fire department's funding and staffing. Obviously, we need to increase the paid part-time amount for the fire department. I just got the amount of what it would cost if we were AFD. I know that we are a quarter, right now, under a quarter of what it would cost to have IAFF here. And so I would like to increase our fire protection budget a little bit so we can have better staffing, especially for engineer coverage and that. But I don't understand, if we have this tax cap, how that works. I guess I would like the municipality to tell us at the fire department, because I get the question I get asked the most is, wow, my tax rate and my appraisal of my house has gone up 30% to 50%. Why is your budget still the same? And, oh, look, there's all this development going on. Why is your budget still the same? And I have to say, well, I know there's this tax cap and that. So I guess I need somebody, I need somebody to give me talking points on why our budget can never increase based versus the size of what, the value of what we're protecting now and the number of extra homes we're protecting now, and that.
Thank you, Chief Weston. Mike had his hand up, but you asked a question first, and you were presenting. So would the Muni like to respond to that first?
This is Amy Daboski. I will say two comments. Number one, your contract is subject to appropriation every year by the Assembly, number one. Number two, I'm happy to get you together with the acting OMB director to kind of go through the tax cap and all the nuances of it. I think that would be helpful for you, Michelle. If you'd like to do that, I can connect you both.
Okay, yeah, that would be great. I just, I need to have something to say to people who are like, I don't understand why you're driving 16-year-old apparatus on the highway and that. And I don't have a good answer, other than, well, I'm working within the budget that I have. And, you know, why are your volunteers or your paid part-time people paid $1 less than they were 20 years ago? Well, while I'm working within my budget, right? I need to have better answers or better talking points, and maybe OMB can direct to me why we have a tax cap.
Thank you. Mike, go ahead.
Yes, several points. Obviously, the total budget you have has two different components. It has the EMS component coming from the municipality, which I think does sit under the municipality's tax cap. And then you have the fire services, which comes under the service area, which we have a separate tax cap, which is not part of the overall municipal tax cap. We have a tax cap of $6 mil within Girdwood that I think Girdwood residents voted for a number of years ago. It was like a decade or so ago, or maybe longer. So there are two different components, and I'm not sure, I wasn't clear if you were talking about both or the...
I am talking about the...
Because obviously, both have gone up over the last several years.
The fire, yeah.
Well, that has gone up over the last few years.
I just, it would be helpful to know the value of our protection area now. And with all the new homes and everything going in, you know, we have to scale the department effectively to respond to the risk at hand. And then, separate from that, my other bigger challenge is trying to have reliable vehicles on the road and watercraft in the EMS service area. You know, when we, it's great to have APD on the highway. I really appreciate having them on the highway. But know that for the first half an hour to 45 minutes of any call, I am rolling out being the blocking vehicle. And so when I'm driving a 60, when we're both driving 16-year-olds and 12-year-old vehicles, I don't always start. It's very stressful on the highway, on these highway calls, if we think our vehicles are unreliable. So I just, I think it's great to have APD on the highway, but we need to figure out a way that maybe we have vehicles that actually are, you know, within the last 10 years or something, that are those primary response vehicles. And again, the highway is outside of our fire service area. So just, you know, I can't use, it's hard to say use fire funding for something that's primarily outside our EMS area, so our fire service area. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Weston. Mike, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, I'm happy to work with Kyle to sort of get some numbers together to show the changes in funding from both the EMS component and the fire component. Definitely, I can give you the numbers for the changed assessed value of the service area. The other thing I was gonna mention is, I got a message earlier this week from, or last week, sorry, from our state representative, Representative Kaufman, who mentioned an item in the capital budget for the fire department. But I didn't, I wasn't able to follow up with details and check what's actually in there. And obviously, it's still subject to line item veto from the governor. So it might be worth following up on that.
No, I can tell you what that is.
Thank you.
So when AFD told us to go fundraise for all the extrication equipment, I turned to my partners in the South to see what their status was on their extrication equipment. And so there's a line item that was approved in the, that's in the capital budget, the state capital budget, that provides extrication funding for the 12 other departments, us and the 12 other departments south of Anchorage, to raise up our extrication equipment. So it says clearinghouse on there, that, you know, we'll probably see maybe 20,000 of that when we divide it up between all 12 departments. It works out to about 23,000. But I took the lead on that just because I'm the one that has the biggest problem in the state. So I wanted to try and fix it. And then, separate from that, I was able to get 100, over 100,000 in funding from DOT, from the Office of Highway Safety. And then I've been aggressively working on private donations as well to get the extrication issue sorted out. So know that even though we now have funding, all that equipment is not coming online for this tourist season. It probably won't be online until November, when it gets here.
Thank you, Chief Weston. Thank you, Mike. Kyle is in the queue, and then Suzanne LaFrance.
Chief, it almost sounds like it's a new problem with the response vehicles, but I know this is something that we've been working on here for the last several months. And it seemed like you're trying to get the new 150s, and there's a supply issue. So it just comes across that we haven't dealt with this problem, and I feel like we are trying to deal with this problem and find a resolution to it. And, you know, we do have the funding there. We talked about replacing engine 41, but now we put that on hold to deal with the...
Yeah, Kyle, I'm not throwing, I'm not throwing stones at anybody. I'm just saying that these response vehicles are not just used in Girdwood. They're used primarily also on the highway, which is outside of the fire service area. So trying to replace three vehicles out of the fire service funds, you know, it seems like there should be a contribution of EMS funds or something, but obviously, there's not. And, you know, and I'm thankful that when I got here four years ago or three years ago, you know, I didn't, there wasn't a command vehicle, and AFD was able to take the vehicle that I have and blow the mold off of it and put it back together as a response vehicle from the boneyard at the fire department. I mean, I'm very grateful to have a vehicle to use, and I'm grateful that it has a new engine in it. But I just feel like, you know, I think that we could somehow get the funding to do better. And that's nothing against the service area. I just feel like we're falling behind, and it's just weird to me. And then additionally, you should know that I did put in a grant request with the health department, with the COVID money, that the health department had for replacing at least two of the vehicles. And then also replacing, and then we also have outstanding grants on replacing the boat, some more extrication equipment, and all the 17 sets of turnouts that we have that are expired and not, when people aren't able to go and burn any buildings with them.
Thank you. Anything else, Kyle?
No.
Okay, Suzanne, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Chief Weston, for the work that you and your teams do. I wanted to clarify that the contract you're referring to is the one to provide EMS service outside the fire service area along the Seward Highway, correct?
Yes, well, it's inside and outside of the fire service area.
Okay, inside and outside. And I know I'm one of 11 on the Assembly, but I will definitely do what I can to help other members see the value of this contract. I think that the municipality is really getting a great deal. You know, public safety issues aside too, I mean, just the dollar value of it seems like, again, a really great deal to the municipality for that. And if there is a need to reappropriate funds, I'm definitely in support of that to ensure that there is adequate compensation. And I thought that the contract negotiations were still underway, and we hadn't appropriated funds for that yet, but I may have missed that piece. So I just wanted to mention that.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah, and, you know, I mean, things are working. We are very thankful that the new amount was provided to us this year. I think that's helped a lot move things forward. It's just, you know, there's lots of other things that we are, you know, it's been a three-year project of trying to bring the department up to a better standard. And I just, you know, it seems like every time we get one over one hurdle, there's this other large hurdle looming there. We will need the, in like maybe two years, we will need help from the municipality. And I've talked to Trig about this already, Trig Erickson at the radio shop, because apparently our radio system, just like the police's radio system, APD's radio system, is not, is gonna self-destruct in two or three years. And that's like a huge $400,000 replacement that we will have to find money for. So just putting that out there of, that's something we will definitely need help from the municipality with as we go forward and replace the three vehicles, find funding for the boat, and then also replace engine 41.
Thank you, Chief Weston. Thank you, Suzanne. Are there any other comments or questions on this topic? Well, thank you, everyone, for your work, and thank you, Chief Weston, for your continued work. Well, thank you, everyone, for your work and thank you, Chief Weston, for your continued work in representing all the needs of the fire department here in Girdwood. Okay, I think we can go to number three then. On the agenda, HLB topics. We have three HLB annual work plan revisions, the Girdwood Residential 2021 Project, Holton Hills. Oh, those are the two, sorry. Going ahead to myself. So I see that Connie Yoshimura has joined us for this meeting. And we have, if Kyle, you could start with this and then anyone else, please.
I don't know particularly a lot. I just know that the comments have been received for the HLB annual work plan. But everything is on hold as the transition and staff there has sort of overwhelmed the remaining land manager. She tries to pick up a lot of these projects. So I can't speak to that. But it was shared with us today, the Holton Hills Development Agreement, which the board requested and I forwarded that on to you earlier on today for that. So that is probably the most updated information I have at this point. We did get confirmation that the May meeting of the HLB Advisory Committee would be canceled. So that will now be happening, which was scheduled for this week, I remember. So that's everything I know at this point. If you have any questions, let me know.
Great, thank you, Kyle. It's really helpful. Does anyone else have something to add? From the board? Okay, okay, Mike, go ahead.
I just had one thing, one update. There is a, there was a request from Dow to present the upcoming land use and GBOS meetings. And I think that's the reason plat and comprehensive plan for track B, not for the whole thing. So that's the only information I have at the moment. At least things are starting to move ahead.
Correct, thank you. And they're asking to present the next land use meeting, Girdwood Land Use Meeting?
Yeah, land use. And then the community, the required community, the meeting will be the, will be one of the June meetings, not July meetings, sorry.
Okay. Great, thank you. All right, the Girdwood Residential 2021 Project, Holton Hills. Do you have an update on that HLB topic?
I can't get to that in the sense that only thing we received is the development agreement, which was requested from the board and we forwarded that on to the board and LUC members today.
Okay, right, thank you. Any other comments or questions on the Holton Hills? Mike, is your hand still up or are you up?
Sorry.
Okay. And Connie, feel free, oh, Mike, now your hand's up.
Oh, sorry, I'm just pressing it too many times.
That's right.
It should be down.
Means my computer's working. It's good. Okay. Connie Yoshimura, if you'd like to say anything, you're welcome to on this topic before we go to number four. Okay, go ahead to Glacier Creek Bridge Project, Status of Funding and Project Design.
Well, we got our fingers crossed. At this point, the state and the capital budget has 1.2 million for the bridge. As stated earlier, it's going to the governor's desk now and hopefully it will not receive a line item veto. If it comes through, that'd be great news as it will match up with funding that we currently have for it. We are pushing forward on project design right now. The sort of hurdle we run into is that we would, in the long run, want the the US Forest Service to take over ownership of this bridge as they manage the alignment on each side in each direction. And so they are on board to do that. They're just concerned about the engineering firm having experience building suspension bridges before. And we think we've solved that issue and also allowed for another engineering firm local here in Alaska to gain the experience so that they have experience with suspension bridges. Because US Forest Service recognizes that they have other portions of the dry trail that are going to need suspension bridges similar to what we are proposing to build out at Winter Creek. And so this week, we are meeting with our partners at Madison North and engineering firm out of Montana called Morrison and Merrily. And our friend David Stallworth, who's an engineer here in Anchorage. And we're going to work together and come up a proposal that works to satisfy, satisfy the needs of the US Forest Service, our needs, and push forward. We're still pushing for a 2023 build. So we'll be working over the summer to get all the fieldwork completed and then hopefully have a full design package that's ready for bid by the early point of next year. So that's where we're at at this point in time.
Thank you very much, Kyle, for doing all of this work and comprehensive planning. And good news, we will keep our fingers crossed for these grants. Any questions from the board or anyone? Yes, Mike?
Just a quick question. How does the money get routed to the right place? Is that, is that capital money come to the service area or come to the municipality? I just wondered if you had any details on that process.
Well, it'll come to the municipality and it'll get assigned to our capital accounts like all our other, it's considered a grant. So it's been quite a while since we've received a grant from the state, like mostly everybody else in Alaska. And so, but in the past, we just finished with Road and Drainage Improvement Grant. That we used on Alberg. We actually had two grants there from the state. And then, so this one will come there and then the accountants will assign it to our account.
Okay, so go through a capital account for Parks and Row.
Correct.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mike, for that clarifying question.
This is Connie Yoshimura. And if we could back up just for one minute, I apologize, I had some technical difficulties. If this is all right, I would like to speak for just a minute about Holton Hills and where we are.
Please, I'm sorry you had difficulties. Thank you.
Yes, I apologize. I had some problems getting in, but I'm here. So I would like to say that I am aware of all the discussion that's been going on about affordable and workforce housing. We are looking, as a result of all of that, at our preliminary schematic for Holton Hills, phases one and two. We are now looking at some duplex condos, some smaller townhouses in a fourplex configuration that might be between 20 and 24 feet wide and attached. And I am meeting with an architect on Wednesday to get a schematic for some eightplexes that would be three stories with two bedrooms, two baths and that sort of thing. And with a garage, stall garages on the first floor. So we are very cognizant of what the needs for the community are as far as workforce and affordable housing. Unfortunately, we have also reached out to the Alaska Housing Finance Corporation to see if there was any potential special financing for teachers, firefighters and police. And we have been turned down from that, at least verbally. I do intend to make another run on them. As you know, we've had increases in cost for construction and we have rising interest rates. So affordability is definitely going to be a challenge, but we are listening to the community. Mike, I know we weren't able to connect last week when I did reach out to you, but I am hopeful that we could meet in the near term before the June 20th meeting to have some further discussions about the concern that you have for affordability and workforce housing.
Thank you very much, Connie, for this update. Mike, you have your hand up. Please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I was just going to, do you have a, I know the mechanism proposed for how to tie the housing to the land development? Because I know the proposal, as it stood originally, was really a land development, lot development proposal. So how would you, how was the plan to tie that into actual housing construction?
Well, as you could see, when, following the RFP, which the development agreement does, we are residential land developers. We do horizontal work. We do not build vertical, and I think that was one of the attractive features about our RFP, because it will be open to a wide variety of private parties and individual builders. We've had some preliminary discussions. It's a little too soon to be taking reservations. We want to finalize our site plan first in terms of the number of single-family lots, their individual widths, what areas can be designated for low-density multifamily. And so once we finalize all of that, as far as our schematic and preliminary plat is concerned, then I think we will be able to take the next step and say, what sort of reservations can we take? Now, obviously, according to state law, you can only take a reservation for a parcel of property that does not yet have a recorded plat. So if you are looking, say, for example, at an individual lot, you can take the reservation with a deposit, which goes into a non-interest-bearing trust account and is returned at demand. And it is only after the final plat is approved and all of the improvements occur to that, that you're able to convert that reservation to a purchase and sale agreement. So I think what you're really asking is what is going to be the process for accepting a lot reservation? Is that your question?
No, the question may be, but I don't understand this very well. So you may have answered my question. The question is, how do you, what mechanic, what mechanism do you use to go from a lot to a particular type of housing or style of housing or a cost for that housing?
So that would be through the covenant codes and restrictions for the subdivision. And we do plan to have a master association for all of the lots. And then any condominium development would be a sub-association. But there will be architectural and landscaping requirements through the master association. And actually, on Sunday, I was out taking photos of duplexes and single-family homes that I thought might be appropriate architecturally for Holton Hills. As you may or may not know, I've also visited Girdwood several times and have photos also that I think would demonstrate the architectural elements that we're looking for that are also compatible and already exist in the community of Girdwood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Are there any other questions or comments? I appreciate you being here, Connie, to explain all of this update to everyone. It's very helpful for us to know.
Thank you.
In the meantime, would we reach out to you then for anything before you mentioned June 20th?
I am happy to meet at anyone's convenience or answer anyone's questions. It is a work in process. There are many steps that still need to be done, both by the Heritage Land Bank and myself as the developer.
Right, okay, thank you. All right, jumping back to number four. There's something else? Okay. Was there anything else after the last question about where the money was being routed for the Glacier Creek Bridge? Or anything else? Okay, then Kyle, I'll go to number five, which is Alaska Wastewater and Utility AWU. Update from that topic.
I have no direct updates, you know, that they were going to return the floor right to the water and they were making those improvements and they made that announcement at the last GBOS meeting. But we did receive an email today from Sandy Baker and she would like to coordinate a time to give to GBOS a tour of the treatment plant and the pump house above the airport there. So we'll be coordinating a time with you guys to hopefully find that during the week.
Great, thank you. Mike, do you have anything to add to number five? For the Muni?
I do not for AWU now.
Okay, great. Don't see any other hands. So I'll move to number six. Funding for Girdwood Area Plan slash Imagine Girdwood. So this has been added to our agenda to discuss an update here. Kyle, do you know if you'd like to start and then I could call on anyone?
I have no update on this. Maybe think that they represent us from Imagine Girdwood, right?
Yes. All right, Mike, could you give an update, please?
I was actually going to see if Amanda was able to, but I can if Amanda's not able to.
All right, Amanda, your turn.
Okay, so, can you hear me? Sorry.
Yes, great.
Okay, so we were working with the planning department, Ms. Reynolds, and trying to secure funding through the state to get the plan done. We've been working closely with the planning department recently. And we foresee a longer, you know, answer to our question of if we're going to get funding. We did submit a request or an application, preliminary application with the ARPA funding to the municipality. And think that our ask is in line with the objectives of the assembly for that money and hope to get to move on to the next round. And that is about where we are right now.
Muted. Thank you, Amanda. Mike, do you have anything to add to the update?
Amanda did a great job of describing where we are at the moment.
Okay. Any questions from Muni? Okay. Well, that is technically, oops, I just heard a blip. The, Amanda, go ahead.
Sorry, I just wanted to just make sure that we are on, you know, the radar of the municipality, assembly and staff that, yeah, this plan has been in the works since 2017. And it's, you know, 27 years old. And I think it would help the community greatly in its future development, but maybe that means no changes necessarily. Just the future of Girdwood is to have this plan completed. And the planning department is also very motivated as they would like to have a plan to go off of for this community. And thank you for any consideration.
Thank you, Amanda. Well said. We are needing these plans complete to move on as a community and a tourist destination as well. I'll go to number seven, discuss status of HB 411 and future action by MOA to allow elected service area boards to use municipal tax exemptions. Mike?
Yeah, I'll speak to this. So HB 411 was. Yeah, I'll speak, I'll speak to this. So HB 411 was my first up close view of dealing with the state legislature. And it was an interesting experience. I'm not sure I'd recommend it, but it was definitely an interesting learning experience. So we, it passed in the end with Senate concurrence. There were a few changes made to it. It expanded the definition of economic development, which is beneficial for many municipalities around the state. It removed the, the limitation that stopped elected service boards from you, from having tax exemptions, even if they wanted to. There is now a veto for elected service boards, so they can veto a tax exemption passed by a borough level, or in our case, the municipal assembly. To, we could, they could veto if, as it applies to their tax levy. And the other thing it does as well is it, last minute amendment in the Senate was to increase the the residential property exemption from 50,000 to 75,000, which municipalities can choose to use. There was a limit of 50. Now that limit is 75, although it's not mandatory, it's optional. So we still could not use tax exemption because although the state, well, first of all, of course, it hasn't been signed by the governor. It needs to get the governor's signature. But once that happens and it's in law, then we would not be prevented from using potential tax exemptions as far as the state is concerned, but there is still a prohibition in, in municipal code. And the reason the prohibition was put in municipal code was because there used to be that limitation in state code. So at some point in the next, you know, few months, it would be good to clean up the municipal code so it now aligns with the new state law to take out that particular limitation. So I'll work with our assembly members to, to do that directly unless the administration, but we'll just go ahead and do it.
Thank you, Mike. Are there any questions? Or comments? I appreciate all of your work on that and all of us do, actually. Okay, I don't see any hands from Muni or Assembly. So we added number eight to the agenda, Discussion of Girdwood Transfer Station Schedule and Possible Solutions for Trash Disposal. This item was reminded on all of our agendas or at our community meetings that the, the transfer station was going to change their hours on June 1. And it was recently brought up by a community member that they were concerned. And that might just be one voice out of many to discuss options. And as we all know, we live in a place where bears frequent, especially in the summer. And this is a, and I'm speaking of my thoughts of, of very popular for VRBOs and people unknowingly putting trash in the wrong places. And then when the transfer station also limits the hours, it could have a negative impact on our community. So, uh, who would like to discuss this?
I can start the discussion because I've had the discussion strictly with Solid Waste Services.
Thanks.
This decision is driven in two part, one, because of staffing, but two, also the review of receipts and income that they receive for the transfer station down here. You know, that, like, the utility is, they don't receive taxpayer dollars. They run on revenue that they make from running basically the utility like a business, the fees that are paid for disposing of trash. And so they've looked at their receipts over the last five or 10 years and they've seen that Sunday's been the slowest of the days. And so they made a decision until, to close Sundays in order to maintain their, their funding levels that they have available at this point in time down there. One thing that I asked maybe what was affecting that, and they said they've seen a significant rise in people having home disposal services. Waste management now has more than ever, people having garbage cans at home, they can pick up every Tuesday. I can testify to that. When we're plowing snow on Tuesdays, how many cans are out there? And so people are less and less coming to the transfer station because now they have the luxury at their doorstep, they have the trash taken there. And so that has restricted their ability to create revenue at our transfer station. So switching down to three days is sort of response to that, that I heard from the utility. So at this point in time, there, there is not a quick, easy solution. You know, there's been the discussion of doing what they do on the peninsula, where they have transfer stations that are open and unmanned for certain hours a day in the summer. I know in Cooperland, they shut them because they have big bear problems at these transfer stations. And so they have volunteers who go over there and close the gates and and make sure the trash is picked up. But in this case, we don't have an easy solution like that. And, you know, it would just create another level of regulation and, and structure to, to make it work. So, and on the peninsula, the way they pay for their trash services is that it is borough-run, but it is paid through sales tax and other property taxes they're collecting for it. So at this point in time, the residents in Girdwood and, and Anchorage as a whole don't pay for trash services due to their taxes. They pay as they use it.
Thank you, Kyle. That's great information to utilize for this and applicable. So, Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna, I was just gonna make this, really just reiterate the comment that Brianna has already said, of there's a lot of, because of the way short-term rentals work here, there's a lot of people who leave on a Sunday and we have, we probably have more examples of trash being left around and bears getting into on a Sunday than other days of the week, except for the broken, the non-bear-proof trash cans which Alaska Waste provides, which obviously encourages them to break in on Tuesday. But Sunday is kind of problematic. I understand why Solid Waste Services made the decision to shut down service, not have service on a Sunday if they had lowest receipts. But there's, it's actually, what they do get is quite important to the community. So it's a pity they chose that. There is this weird thing in code that GBOS, at least in one section of code, has, has the responsibility of providing solid waste services as well. I don't know if that's just a mistake, but the fact that, at least in code, we do have the ability to spend money on that, makes me wonder if there are some more options here.
Thank you, Mike. That's something we could definitely discuss in our next meeting in the future, too. Any thoughts from the municipality or anyone else on the call? Okay. Well, thank you for those updates and discussing that item. Looks like we are about to wrap up at five. So going to my agenda here. Public comment. Person's offering public comment must state their full name and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person and must be on subjects not listed on the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to make public comment today? Don't see any hands. So I think we are on our next item is adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn. This is Jennifer.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Second.
Second. Thank you, Mike. Thank you all for attending and contributing today.
All right. Have a good afternoon.
Bye-bye.
Thanks, Brianna.
Thanks, Fran.